Good evening, welcome to the Township with Lacy Council meeting, May 26, 2022. I have the notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Republican Meeting Act pursuant to public laws, 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Ashbury Park Press and the Beacon, it was posted on the bulletin board, shown at time of place of the meeting. To start our meeting, we're to salute this flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, request to post signs relay for life event.
Mr. Bender has sent us an email requesting to post signs in advance of his relay for life event, which is June 11?
June 11.
June 11, at Veterans Park in Bevo. I just need permission to have it. We do want two weeks in advance, right?
Uh, we were thinking about making tomorrow, which is two weeks in advance.
Well, yes, two weeks in advance.
Play a dead.
Right, do I have a motion to approve that?
Second. All favor.
Next is Mr. Angona.
Murdering of doggy dirty, Ted Carney.
Yes, so I am Tony Angona, I live down on Main Lane North in Old Park, and again, I'm here for the night time. This is our night time move, doggy dirty one, and of course, from Martin's Flight Committee members, the judges that are voting contest. This year, we have four contests. We have best dressed dog, best dog tricks, most happy dog, and dog owner look like a little corner look like that's kind of hard, you know, dog that looks like that looks great, I can see it, I can see a whole dog, I mean, a couple with a paw.
Bull dog!
But you know, I think you have to be, you know, your appearance could be, but I remember a couple of years back, one person, or I think one, dressed the dog up as if it were a hot dog, and that person also had an apron that made him look like a hot dog. Maybe one, so it could be, you know, the way you're dressing a dog too.
Okay, so what, 11:00 AM, what's the starting time?
It starts at 11:00, on June 5th, 11 o'clock to June 5th.
Charles Road View.
On Charles Road View, and it's from 11 to 3. And again, it's more than just a doggy dirty, it's a, it's a doggy dirty slash fun day for the family, because there's a lot of activities going on for the whole family. We, we have a recreation area that will, our recreation department plus the interact students from our high school will be running it. They'll have fun and games, we have a bounce house that kids can enjoy using, I think we're gonna try and get together a volleyball game as well, yes.
Mr. Gill, any cards for Mr. DiGino or any other?
Um, I'm not sure if they're going to end or not, they would say, his group is not, but we reached out to, let's see, oh.
Send public workers?
Yeah, send public workers and see who shows. But we did have a car show, as we know, and it was very successful.
Yes, that was excellent.
I'm talking best dressed dog, now the thing is, now there's an admission fee of $5, but the most that any family will spend is $20. So if you have a large family, you're going to be your grandmother, your grandfather, your uncle Millie, your uncle Pat, your aunt Millie, and all grandchildren, it's only going to cost you $20. And again, you know, the money that we raise goes towards the work of the foundation, and with that, and we try to do good things for our community. That's it, that's what we have, and I wanted to just give something to peg to the shoulder from our head when we have, okay?
Oh, you have that top? Oh, the seatbelt for shoulder?
This is on the inside back cut real hard.
And he was a little bit of a bull, he's just looking back.
That's what we love. We go in. You want to keep that?
Please.
So, yes, that's it, that's why I'm here, too, so I hope, you know, it's a great time for, for all of you to come over to be there, because.
We're in good weather.
Yeah, so far.
Sometimes we've gotten cold, what about this event?
Last year was very hot.
Yes, yes, we're the hots, yes.
Too hot, but this year, so far, the weather looks good, you know.
A little hot, the elevator, the car show, the, the same. A little hot, of course.
It was a little warm, yeah, but I'll take it against rain anyway. But again, it's a great, I think, a great opportunity for all of you guys to come and interact with the general public, you know? Sometimes people have questions, they don't want to, you know, address them, you know, the whole group, but you know, walking around, you need your constituents, and you have an opportunity to interact with them.
That much I agree with, I agree, dogs, I mean, yeah.
How could you not do that, you're a real man.
So that, that's.
Thanks. I have nothing else to add on, so we can adjourn from this meeting, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All favor. Right, next gentleman.
Good evening, welcome to the Township with Lacy Council meeting, May 26, 2022. I have the notice this meeting was given in accordance with the Republican Meeting Act pursuant to public laws, 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Ashbury Park Press and the Beacon, and posted on the bulletin board, shown at time of place of the meeting. We start with a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading of orders, 2022, yes, 15, providing for funding for the Bamber Lake Dam project.
In order to the Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing and providing for the reconstruction of the Bamber Lake Dam, billway appropriating $1,516,500 there, or authorizing issuance of $1,444,285 in bonds and notes, and finance the same of those costs. Obviously, we are not really bonding for this, as you know, we've got money out of New Jersey's DEP through dam safety to pay for this dam, it's actually a long way, we're 36 years that we'll be paying it back, but I need a mechanism in the New Jersey state budget law in order to charge back and forth. So what will happen is, we'll get an expense bill, I send it to the state, and they reimburse us. It's not even like I'm going to have any money out of our pocket, it takes about a three week term on time from the states to go along.
Will the dam last longer than the payments?
I'm hoping so. The, the other, the last dam that we've done near this way, we're still making payments on, and it's, it's held up so far.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number two, first reading of orders, 2022, yes, 16, authorizing the purchase of block 1853, lots 5, 6, 14, and 15.
In order to the Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block 1853, lots 5 and 6, and 14 and 15, off of Calvin Street pursuant to NJSA 4812-5. This is, again, nonconforming lots in what I'm going to call Walter's Development Phase 3. We are purchasing them from the property owner for the amount of $68,000. This is all coming out of the Affordable Housing Trust, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number three, first reading of orders, 2022, yes, 17, authorizing purchase of block 1852, lots 14, 19, and block 1853, lots 32, 37.
In order to the Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block 1852, lots 14 through 19, and block 1853, lots 32 through 37, off of Bell Street pursuant to NJSA 4812-5. Again, these are nonconforming lots in Phase 3 of our affordable housing project, we're purchasing them for $77,000.
Move it, second.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes.
I mean, whoo, Mayor Dyckoff. Don't worry, I said, I said Mayor Dyckoff when Tim was sitting here, and I made acting decisions.
So we're even now, for you.
For you.
Act number four, first reading of orders, 2022, yes, 18, authorizing the purchase of block 1853, lots 47 and 48.
In order to the Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing the township code of the Township of Lacy so as to amend chapter 289-7 entitled Recycling Drop Off Center. Our Class 3 recycling facility accepts tires from our residents, up to five tall tires. Unfortunately, there's no market for us to resell, and we have to pay to dispose until we pass this on to the users, so we are increasing our fee from $2 up to $3.
Second reading, open the public comment.
See, you're gonna make a motion close.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number six, second reading of orders, 2022, yes, 14, authorizing the acquisition of block 1852, lots 41 and 42.
In order to the Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of block 1852, lots 41 and 42, off of Arthur Street pursuant to NJSA 4812-5. Again, this is in the redevelopment area for Phase 3, this is the second meeting, we are purchasing these lots for $9,000.
Move it, second.
Over the floor.
Second.
Motion close.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number seven, resolution 2022, yes, 155, appointing a municipal court judge.
Resolution, Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Benjamin H. Maybe III as municipal court judge for the Township of Lacy. After 30 years, our current court, municipal court judge, Damian Murray, is retiring. We have solicited resumes, we have performed some interviews, and we have selected Mr. Maybe to fill the vacancy of the municipal court judge. By statute, it is a three-year term that begins on July 1st, and at this point expires on June 30th of 2025, and at which time he will be considered for reappointment, and the said salary is at $40,000 a year.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, congratulations.
Mayor, thank you very much. I mean, you're 28 now, well, 29, I'm just turning 20. But, no, I thank you all, I thank you for, you know, your faith, and I will do my best to serve Lacy and township in residence, and I look forward to working with you in the rest of the year.
Is this your son?
This is my son.
Do you have to drag you out here tonight, or did you volunteer to go?
I volunteered to go.
Well, this is a boring meeting, so don't think government's holding you.
But thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight, resolution 2023, yes, 156, urging the New Jersey Legislature to amend the budget cap law.
Resolution, Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, urging the New Jersey Legislature to amend the budget cap law to appropriate funds for increasing insurance costs. There's been a lot of legislation that has changed a lot of the costs that are passed down to municipalities via their insurance companies, and the 2% levy cap is just not cutting it. We have the workers' compensation law that changed, we have the presumption, the cancer presumption law that changed, accidental disability, all of those items are being passed down and being shared by those municipalities and, and townships. So the 2% budget cap is not going to cut it, and we are asking and hoping that we can get an increase through the state to increase that cap law.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number nine, resolution 2022, yes, 157, authorizing the settlement of litigation.
Resolution, Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the settlement of litigation. This is due to an OPR, which is Open Public Records Act request, this is a denial of records which was challenged, unfortunately, the town did not prevail, and we have to pay the attorney's fees for the, the complaint in the amount of $1,641.26. Motion?
Move it, second.
McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number 11, resolution 2022, yes, 159, authorizing the release of performance bond.
Resolution, Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance bond posted for Invest River LLC, otherwise known as Starbucks Coffee. It has been released from the performance bond, all of the conditions have been put in place, and there is no maintenance bond warranted since it was not in any of the township's right of ways.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number 12, resolution 2022, yes, 160, authorizing the release of performance bond for road opening permit 4763.
Resolution, Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee posted by LJ Enterprises for road opening permit 4763. This is in front of 1467, 1476 period way, the bond that was in place was $500.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number 13, resolution 2022, yes, 161, authorizing the release of performance bond for road opening permit 4746.
Resolution, Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee posted by LJ Enterprises for road opening permit 4746, and this is for property on Inwood Road, the release of the bond is in the amount of $1,300.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number 15, resolution 2022, yes, 163, authorizing refund of deposit monies.
Resolution, Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item staying on G245.
Wait, can we do that, about this one? For the release?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to pay the bills. Item number 16, resolution 2022, yes, 164, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution, Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $2,821,615.44.
Move it, second.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item staying on G245.
So your D's?
D0400.
Gotcha.
Item number 17, motion to approve the township meeting minutes of April 14, 2022. Move it, second. All favor.
You have to abstain if you weren't here.
I tried, abstained.
So can I have a second on that?
Second.
And then you abstained.
Item number 18, motion to approve the township meeting minutes of April 28, 2022. Move it, second. All favor.
Aye.
Item number 19, motion to approve the township meeting minutes of May 12, 2022. Move it, second. All favor.
Aye.
I'm trying to catch up to you. You're actually fast, but you are really fast tonight.
Coffee, coffee.
You don't want me to have caffeine, guys. You really don't want me to have caffeine. It's dangerous. It's not pretty, see.
Motion to approve a rental license for the Lacy soccer club. Move it, second. All favor.
Aye.
I have an add-on. Can you imagine that? We have had one like that. So on Tuesday, we opened up the bids, and they've been reviewed by Public Works for the title control valves. So it's a resolution of Township with Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, a warrant contract, contract for the purchase of title control valves. We received two bids, the lowest responsible bidder is WAPRO, who actually is the manufacturer of those valves, there's about 42 valves that we will be ordering, this is being done with the American Recovery Funds that, that we have received, and we are purchasing these valves for these low-lined streets that have been flooded in the amount of $243,954.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hurtola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Juliana?
Yes.
And Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, and that's G45.
The American Recovery Act funds, yes.
Which is great. Any other add-ons? Comments from the committee, Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor, I've got a couple things here. I've been talking lately about S330, which is equalizing the energy receipt tax. It is out of the Senate, into the Assembly, they did make some changes to, instead of a five-year period, get us all within two years, which is a good thing, and the Assembly Bill is A3804. Hopefully that'll come out, I know there are, are some of the people who are on it and working diligently to try to get that passed, and that would be a great, great relief for the citizens. Judge May, congratulations.
Great.
Great employment here. Other thing I haven't got, the Memorial Day Parade coming up, and Memorial Day service, I guess you'd call it, if you're here at 1:00, it's about 1:00 o'clock, and Craig goes up at 9:30, no, 10:00 o'clock.
10:00, 10:00 o'clock, Craig goes home, we're usually about an hour.
Yeah, so, and because it's Memorial Day weekend, last week had the Historical Society, they had a lady who actually lives here in Lacey, she didn't always live in Lacey, but this is a lady, her name is Agnes Joan Neve, N-E-G-R-A. She was up in Dublin, she's over 100 years old right now, and during World War II, she went out and bought a ham radio, and the Germans, they, through negotiation, were forced to announce who they had as prisoners of war. And what she would do is, she would track these people down, the families, and she wrote them a letter, and the, and her son was going through, she moved down here, her son lives here, he was going through it, and he printed up this book, and it's absolutely, I found it at 11:00 one night, and went to sleep at about 2:00 in the morning, because I was so fascinated by this, this lady stole it, and she actually went to the Historical Society and brought this out, so it's called Waves of Hope, and some of the, and the replies that are coming back are amazing. There was a investment banker on Wall Street who was just ecstatic about it, I mean, she said stuff all over the country, Seattle, Washington, California, it's just amazing. I think it's down in the Historical Society, if you get a chance, you may want to read that.
So that one on Amazon, too?
Yes, okay. Parents' Bill of Rights, which was passed by the county commissioner just the other day, thank you, tired of coffee, he ripped it off down in Virginia, parents have always had to say what the education system is, that's my personal belief, so, you know, from there. Now, I'm gonna deal with something, these OPR lawsuits, and that's what it is, this is a scam, this is what this guy does, he passes, you get the OPR request, and we deny it, we don't get it in time, and how many do we give a debt, Veronica?
Five, if ours, we're up to over 400 since January already, and this gentleman has put in at least 42 already this year.
Right, it's a scam, and then, and then, and we gotta, we gotta do it, we don't meet all the requirements, and some of this stuff is now because of the body cams, they gotta go through that, and that takes about an hour, it takes about six hours for the police officer to go through it. This is an absolute scam, and I'm furious about it, and I hate it every time it comes up. We've tried, we're trying our best to put some safeguards in place, and it doesn't, how much did we spend this, this bill for?
Right now, this is over $4,000, that's like $4,600.
$4,600, that we're going out to a scam wire, and that's just, perfect.
Burke's can be paid for that.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Your call.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I definitely want to support what Deputy Mayor McDonald is saying about the OPR, it's, you know, at the county, we have some people handling it, but in municipality, we have fewer. We need a longer amount of time to be able to satisfy that, that's reasonable, especially with the discovery situations with, you know, the body cams now, the miners being on the body cams, that footage has to be vetted, and those people have to be protected. So the elephant in the room tonight, the, the shooting down in Texas, it's, we've heard, unfortunate and unbelievable. People on this committee are gonna be meeting with our school board, we're all, I'm sure, in contact, I'll speak for myself, now before this meeting, with Commissioner Quinn, Sheriff, Master Sergeant Chief, and everyone is working in unison to keep our kids safe, we know it, we have a 28 or so percent of our population here, from eight to five, we want them protected, the sheriff has authorized expert patrols, the chief is well aware, we're meeting again with our superintendent and our school board on the 31st at 3:30, and we're hoping that those are fruitful negotiations, it's completely non-political state, and the state that we're gonna be looking out for our kids, and we're gonna put our heads together, what I'd like to see in the future is have legislation for funding to be put in place that requires, that takes the heat off of us every year, it takes the heat off of the school board, it reduces the friction between the two bodies, and if there are requirements legislatively, there should be, retired officer at Class 3 or an active-duty officer, which really an educational value, right, for the school, too, with some prevention programs. Will it help? Yeah, it'll help, some of these active shooter scenarios, as you know, are done in less than three minutes, so it's very, very difficult, we can't legislate mental health, so I don't think it's a gun problem, this is me talking now, I'm not even as elected as Pete, I don't think it's a gun issue, I think it's a mental health issue, and vast majority of governors are very responsible and decent people, there are many, many of them in our town, so we're on it, we're all in conference with our, not only the folks I mentioned, but Prosecutor Bill Heimer as well, so we're gonna be working on this issue very, very diligently, and not leaving our schools bare, and not leaving our kids alone, that much I tell you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd agree with Mr. Hurtola, what he's talking about there is very important, but I also wanted to thank Mayor for being out on Saturday and helping to support the blood drive that was in honor of my husband's name, thank you for being there, I appreciate it very much. Tomorrow night at 4:30 at the Good Luck Cemetery, their Boy Scout troop is gonna be putting flags out on, on the plots, so if anybody is able to come, it's good to show your face and support them, too. Of course, we have the parade on Monday, and tomorrow is also a luncheon for our municipal alliance, so hopefully some of us can be there and show our faces for them, too, you know.
A month already?
Yeah.
Doesn't this seem like a challenge?
It does, yes.
I'm glad.
And I want to congratulate Mr. Maybe, I hope to be working with you, and there's a young man in the audience, he's a seventh grader at my school, and I just told him to show up, he wants to come out, he wants to be involved in politics, he's only a seventh grader, his name's Dan, and I just think it's great that he showed interest in finding out what we do, you know, so I thought it was really nice that he came out tonight, and, uh, he's here, so, thanks. [applause]
Not that he drew up a Dan at camp, come and visit me and meet the mayor, I had a very, very nice, long conversation with him, and I can't believe he's in the only seventh grade, his demeanor, his stature, and his intelligence, and, again, wanting to get involved.
But it was really so impressive, because I, I work in the school system, and I was coming downstairs, and he was coming up the stairs, and he just stopped me, he's a seventh grader, I bless him, I mean, I, no adult that wouldn't do what he did, and he stopped me, and he said, I just wanted to tell you how sorry I was about your husband, well, of course, God, you know, seventh grader, I know, so, thank you.
What would we do with a seventh grader?
I know, right?
Anyway, I don't even want to say that.
Mr. Kennis?
Thank you, yes, no, I just also want to touch on the school shooting, a completely reprehensible act, and there's just zero excuse for something like that, that to happen once in a, five or six times it's happened, and it's likely some sort of bipartisan approach needs to happen to it, it's not just mental health, and it's not just, you know, restricted gun laws, it's a combination, and there's just zero excuses for it happening, it should never happen again. Do you have any comments?
Thank you. I'll start with that as well, my heart's, my heart goes out to the families, friends, it just keeps on getting worse and worse, no blame, I mean, that's, it's not time for blame, it's time for trying to heal, and, and then, once we heal, and once those poor families get through this, then we can hopefully work forward to some solutions, it's bipartisan, as Mr. Kennis said. I did attend a car show given by, run by the, the Rotary on Saturday, it was a lot of fun, beautiful vehicles, so the interesting part was, they had a mayor's choice trophy, and it was rough, rough, so, you know, my heart said one thing, and my head said another, so, I'm a Ford Mustang guy, my daughter and son-in-law, granddaughter are Chevy guys, you know, so I'm like, so what did I pick? I picked, I picked a Dodge. Done. It was a beautiful 1961 300, it was a beautiful car, but that was it, that's my comments, all in the floor, a public comment?
I'm getting there. I woke up.
You woke up?
Yeah, I was it.
Yeah, I feel you.
I'm getting there. I woke up.
You woke up?
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, I feel you.
My name is Ron Martin, I live at forty-four on Murray Drive. I have a question, the question is, do zero solicitors ordinance for the town?
Yep, and they have to register with the police department in advance to be able to do that. And they have to always have ID on them and stuff, so, and I did notice the other day off of Deerhead Lake Drive, three gentlemen walking around, and I did stop, I was going home, and I stopped them, they were dressed very nicely. And I just stopped them, and they said, "No, we don't have anything." I said, "Okay, well, you better head to the police department." I did call the police department, and I, I can't hear it on the radio anymore, since we're on the new band, so they were gonna send somebody out to have them stop, so you're probably getting them in your neighborhood as well.
Did they charge them for the badge?
No, we don't charge for solicitation for that, no. But we do ask them to register, and we do need to see ID and stuff, and we do a cursory check in the DMV records really quickly for that. But usually they don't apply in advance, you can't come today to get your permit for tonight or tomorrow.
The reason I ask is, I work my way through college, selling encyclopedias. One of those many evening and local storage facilities, because supervisor never registered us, we're supposed to have badges and things like that. Anyway, I pay tuition, and it's good to hear that we do have that, and appreciate it, thank you.
You should've got back the acologist, they're around, I need a call. And I was relatively sure of it, and I wanted to reach out to them.
No problem, no problem, we gotta get back. Can't wait to see the young man, take care.
Anyone else? John Brainerd. I may ignore your tone, just, you run outside and see what...
My name is Renier Mander, at one-twenty-six Station Drive, I was here at the last meeting. We argued a couple different things on zoning. Mayor Dyco, you weren't here for that, but that's okay.
You're the chickens.
Yeah, chickens, the chickens.
And we are, we're working on it, we're working on it.
Okay, also, I wanted to ask about the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance we talked about, that was in review.
It's at, it's at the state of New Jersey's hands, Tom, they have not responded to me. They confirmed that they've received it, and they are reviewing it, but they do not give turnaround time as to when they're going to give it.
Who actually does that?
The D-P.
The D-P, do you have a name and a number? Because I will call them.
I, I do, I do have a name and a number, I, I, you know.
I mean, I might not have two.
I don't know, well, yeah, but I don't know if us harassing them is gonna make them work any quicker.
Of course, of course. So, so far as, so far as the ordinance goes on chickens, I did my research. I'm not gonna read everything I have on this pad right here, if it's a take on it. However, I looked at what Berkeley Township has, and also looked at where Township Township has. And according to both of them, my neighbors would not be able to have chickens, at all. We need an ordinance, and we need an ordinance ban. I've been dealing with this issue for over a year now. I've called the police on these people, I don't know how many times about the noise, the noise issue about it. Now there's a health issue coming about, because there's no waste management, these chickens. They were free-ranging around the backyard, they have a pool.
Do they have a septic system?
No.
Anybody have septic over there?
No.
Then it would be a environmental complaint, you call the county health department, they didn't inspect it.
Well, now here's, here's, here's the caveat, okay? They have a pool in the backyard, they have a tiki bar in the backyard, chickens have been all over the place. All right, last time I was here, I told you, they had like, close to twenty birds. Then they added two ducks, right? You know, it's...
I'm sorry, I shouldn't laugh.
I know you shouldn't laugh, but I'm laughing too, because it's ridiculous, okay? So, apparently, my neighbor wanted to use this pool, so he took all his chickens. I don't have any here, the ducks anymore, so maybe you got rid of the ducks. And he put them into this little square area, it's about as big as this, but high-fencing it, and there's a whole bunch of birds and one chicken coop, which is now a cool thing. Because according to Berkeley, you have to have so much, so much area in a particular coop, per bird. All right, so, now we have multiple violations going on here in other townships, and we don't have anything in this township, any of those. So again, if you wanna see the ordinances from both the other townships, I have plenty.
We have, we have all of them. I'm telling you, I have a stack of them like this. Code enforcement was on vacation last week, so he's getting himself caught up, and he's going to start looking through them and start blending it together. This is something that we've talked about for years, and we've had mixed committee members as to, because it's a hot, in one moment it's a hot topic, next it quiets down. But it also becomes an enforcement issue, is who's gonna go out and enforce this all the time? And then sometimes you're hiring additional staff and everything.
Well, this is, this is what I was, my suggestion would be. The zoning officer would have power to remove any animals, using the animal patrol officer to enforce the ordinance. Why not, we have an animal patrol officer. If we have a zoning ordinance that says you can't have these birds there, the zoning officer goes, "Oh, there?" He looks at it, says, "Oh, you gotta get rid of these birds." Well, like, like he said, she's working on it, right? That's the excuse I began all along, right? "Oh, well, it should get rid of them tomorrow." No, you call the animal patrol officer, he comes up, removes all the offending animals, and it's done with. Takes them over to wherever, or euthanized, whatever it takes.
Well, so, one of the other...
That's a very rough topic.
One of the other reasons why this, when we look at it, we don't know where to go with it, is that a lot of people tend to use them for, you know, for eggs.
I understand that.
Yeah, no, so when they're legitimately using them for, you know, to feed their family, especially now with in light of the cost of...
I understand that too, and I'm not impartial to that.
Right, so, so that's, that was as much as the reason that we were not agreement to pass something as...
Just, just let me read a few points off here that may help you with this, okay? A certain amount of square footage or acres should be set aside to harbor any farm animals, okay?
You have that for like horses, you have to have an acre or two.
Yeah, well, we should have it for any farm animals. And it should be at least an acre, I would think. Now, it's up to you guys to decide what you wanna do with it. Residential areas that have farm animals should be limited to about one out of four in a square foot. That's about what Berkeley does, and if you look at the ordinance system about it, thank God. No roosters at all allowed in residential areas. None of the other townships allow. No grandfather or visiting animals. Once you want this to be put into place, it's enforced. Annual veterinarian and wellness checks, okay? You make these people sit there, because right now, those animals, I know, have never had a vet up there. And we have A D and flu going around in New Jersey right now, okay? But permit, they should free each animal order. I wanna make a little money off this. If they're gonna, if they're gonna have animals, they can go over to the tractor supply and get chicks for two dollars apiece, all right? Why not have them commit for, you have to have a preference for a dog, you have to have a commit for a cat, you have to have a commit for a wolf, or this, all right? Why not have to commit for any animal that you're gonna harbor on your property? That's not wild animals. Rules for disposal of animal waste and proof of such disposal, that's big one. Because this is a health issue here. And I know the weather's getting warmer, and very soon, that's gonna be stinking big time, the back of that yard is gonna be coming over in the morning.
Can I just, excuse me, can I just ask, is this the first that this has come about? Like, she didn't have them a year ago, she's only had them now? How long has this been going on, was like...
Over a year.
And this is the first time you've come out about this to hear?
No, 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 no.
I was just gonna say, I don't think it's at the last...
Yeah, it's first time at the meeting, first time at the meeting, but I got records going back all the way into the middle of last summer.
Twas as for second, you know, we're gonna review the ordinance.
Right.
I agree with you, you know, we need to, just like many things, we need to find a home then. This sounds like something we need to find a home. You know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna make it a hardship on people, but by the same token, we don't wanna make it a hardship on...
Look, if they want a couple chickens, some eggs, I don't have any problem with that. At least do it within the boundaries of what, you know, some of these ordinance is there to put now. You have to have a certain amount of run space for them, you have to have a certain amount of harbor space for them in it, you have to have permits, you have to have wellness checks, you know, and you have to have some kind of clean disposal of the, you know, the waste. Because now you're attracting rodents and everything else. The same thing with feed and whatnot, you know, so, and none of this is being done here. I mean, none. So it's, it's been a real fight, I've been trying to be as amicable as possible with my neighbor about it. Finally, the other day, I blew up over something else on him, I said, "Look, I'm tired of you pushing my buttons, I'm tired of your chickens and your roosters crowing every morning and waking me up, you know, I'm just tired of it." So I think that's when he moved them all into the very back of the yard. There's still got roosters back there, still making noise, there's still, you know, I can't see the difference between a barking dog all day long and a crowing rooster all day long. You know, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. So, Mr. Kennedy, is he here with us?
Yes, he, he, he has several ordinances, because again, it's been a topic for many years, and we put it, we put it on the books, like we stopped, so he's going through. Because I know some towns have since updated their ordinances, because it's no longer about chickens. You know, it's the pigs, it's the goats now, and stuff like that. So we wanna make sure that, that we develop an ordinance that's best going to meet our needs, and we're not constantly updating it.
As much as we like to lead the pack, sometimes it's easier and better for us to follow. And I have the utmost respect to the Berkeley County body and the W-County body, so we'll look at their ordinances and try and come up with something that's helpful for all parties.
Well, you'll get used, really used to seeing my face, gonna be here every, every other Thursday, complaining about this until someone's done, you know? I'm a squeaky wheel against the grease type of guy. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit there and be there, and I'm gonna sit there and talk about it, because I'm the, right here.
We're gonna review it, you presented a...
Again, it doesn't work all that quickly.
I understand that, but...
So, it's not like we're...
But I wanna see some progress, you know, about it being...
It's, it's like you said, it's being, it's being looked at, and we are looking at that. Besides the noise ordinance, and again, I spoke to the guy at the state, he has verified he's received it, he said, you know, we are on the list to get reviewed and considered.
I've been on the list to get reviewed for a year now, and we still have to get reviewed.
The noise ordinance, the noise ordinance, not just, not this one, this is seven.
When do the roosters start crowing in the morning? It's early, it's four o'clock.
Yeah, because the sun starts to...
There's no rhyme or reason, I'm not looking at my house, there's no rhyme or reason. No, sometimes they hear something, they start trauma. I've heard them at midnight, so...
They usually...
Rarely, but usually between four or five o'clock in the morning, at three in the morning, you know? And I, I don't like getting up that early. I work late, I'm doing my own business, you know, like a lot of people are. So I work late lots of times, doing reports and stuff like that. I don't like to have to sleep in the morning, it's affecting my health, it's affecting my wife's health. She's gotta listen to it all day, because we have an in-home office. So, you know, I would really appreciate as much as you can do with that. How's that?
Thank you, we'll work on it, you promise?
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Besides Tony? Tony?
Mayor Hattersby. Fire's always a time to meet you, fasten your seat belts. I was at the township's Board of Education meeting, and because I aggravated with the superintendent's what I said, and she got pretty vehemently upset with me, which is good, okay? I was glad to see that our superintendent challenged what I said, because that shows concern, okay? And I'm hoping I get the same response tonight from our mayor and his council for what I have to say.
Tony, I've known you a long time, thank you.
Yeah, well, did you, you get my email?
I did, I did.
You read it? So you know what it's about? Okay. Well, a couple of things in reference to that. It was a tragedy, yes, we all know it's a tragedy that these students lost their lives. What can we do in a positive way to try to circumvent the tragedy happening in our village? You know, this is where I live, this is where you live. What can we do to try to make things better for us, our kids, our schools, our village? Every village is the same. They have warriors, they have leaders, it's you, okay? Every village has residents, ordinary residents, like me and the people that are here. And every village has people at the other end of the spectrum that have to be taken care of, okay? And it's up to us as residents, and it's up to you as leaders, to do things sometimes, when you hear me say all the time, outside of the box, to make things happen, to make things better, for the entire village, okay? So a lot of the things that I'm gonna say, I don't expect you to agree with everything I say, because I say things a lot of times that are outside of the box, and you know me well that I do it. But, the way I look at it, if you throw enough against the wall, some of it's about to stick, okay? I did it with the credit cards for the township, it came up a bunch of times, finally it stuck, okay? Well, there's different things that I think we can do. Number one, Lacy School, and this was, this was in the patch by the superintendent. Lacy Schools are currently patrolled by a combination of five armed Class Three officers, which are retired, full-time law enforcement officers, school safety officers. In a letter, Pierre, who's our superintendent, confirmed that the new budget does include an allocation for five armed school safety officers who will continue to be the core members of our district staff, as well as liaisons between our community and a Lacy Township Police Department. That's good news, okay? And I pushed for that for a long time, and we got it. But I also pushed for something else that I didn't get yet, and I still wanna pursue it. And I want you to put your input, that maybe you think I'm on the right track. I'll give you an example. I'm eighteen years old, okay, I'm a linebacker on football team here in Lacy. I'm having a bad day. I have an argument with a kid, school resource officer comes over, breaks up the fight. My eighteen-year-old Tastarum kicks in, I grab his gun, and I start shooting. Because I'm eighteen years old, and I'm not in my right mind at that point. Tell me it couldn't happen. It's a possibility, how do you avoid it? I brought it up before, I'll bring it up again, biometric weapons. The gun won't fire unless the fingertip, fingerprint says you can fire that weapon. Now, the biggest thing with biometric weapons is, you have them in your home, you never need them until you have an intruder, so they're, they're never fully charged and ready to go. We now have resource officers in our schools. They are our armors. The guns, the biometric weapons, should be owned by the school district or the township. The armorer picks up his weapon at the beginning of his workday, after it's been fully charged, which he's responsible for, and at the end of the workday, he leaves the weapon secure in that school. The only person who can fire that weapon is who it's assigned to. So, if an eighteen-year-old does go off the rails and grabs the weapons, it's just a piece of metal. Understand? It's a safety precaution, something we should think about in the future. It may make sense, maybe we should spend that little bit of money to buy those kinds of weapons, because now we do have somebody act as an armorer in the school to make sure the weapon is fully charged and is available for use during full, during when it's needed during the school, school process. That's one. I also, I also read that, our superintendent said that they're working, it was a very close working relationship with the Lacy Township Police Department, Lacy Township Committee, which you just spoke of, okay? You said on the thirty-first, there's a meeting. That's something I think we should bring up, that these resource officers, maybe we should look into something like that, in a way of diametric weapons, that are actually owned by the district, are owned by our, our township, and are distributed to each resource officer, of which we have some control through our police department and our chief of police. Now, who would assign it, how would it be assigned, and to make sure they're fully trained? I think that should fall on probably our chief of police, okay? Because I know he's a person who does wanna get involved in our schools, and is interested in our, in our school safety, and in our students, in our village. He is one of our warriors, one of our leaders, and I'm sure he has ideas that could help us move this forward, if it's a good idea. Not saying it is, because it's mine, and I'm outside the box. Now, the other thing, the other thing I read was, that school staff, school staff puts themselves between whoever the perpetrator is, in all these cases that have happened over all these years, and their students. They're all brave. I think they'd be braver if they were armed, okay? Yes, you're saying, armed teachers? With a biometric weapon that's assigned, they pick it up at the beginning of the day, leave it off at the end of the day? It's way outside the box. But, how many lives would it save if they're properly trained and willing to do it, okay? I happen to know some relatives of mine that are teachers, that like, they carry it during the day, because they're gonna protect their students and themselves. There's a Senate bill now that's being presented. Senate Bill number twenty-six thirty-four was introduced on May sixteenth. It has to do with money being appropriated to the Department of Education in the state of New Jersey for a program that would teach responsible gun ownership, okay? I think we should support something like that because gun ownership, when I, when I was training many, 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 many years ago on how to handle a weapon properly, okay? I learned to respect that weapon and its use and what its capabilities are. If you teach it, you teach it properly and you'll have more respect for what this tool does. This tool doesn't discharge itself. Something makes it go off. And the thing that makes it go off is a finger, in most cases. Who controls the finger is the problem, not the tool. That's my personal opinion. A lot of people disagree and they'll just ban all the guns. Ban all the weapons. I agree that military-grade weapons should not be sold to the general public. I don't see any reason for it. There's no reason to have anything more, a magazine that would hold eight shots or nine shots. There are pistols that do have 14, you know, 14-shot magazines. I don't think that's necessary for the general public. Maybe to law enforcement, but to the military, yeah. But there are nine-shot revolvers, okay? Mostly a 22 caliber or 25 caliber. If you know anything about that, then it's true, all right? And Smith &amp; Wesson, it's going out, it's called Lady Smith, all right? Just a nice weapon, titanium, lightweight, easy handle, designed for women for personal protection, okay? But I think that 2634 is a bill. Maybe take a look at it and maybe tweak it with your own opinions as to what should be taught in a curriculum and what shouldn't be taught. And part of what's taught in gun safety is who else has a gun around here? And should I say something about that person having a gun? Because I know something that maybe somebody else doesn't. See something, say something. Same thing with guns. I mean, when I hunted years and years ago, I wouldn't hunt with certain people because I didn't trust their use on a firearm. It's that simple, okay? And I told my friends and people that were hunting with me, don't hunt with that individual because that person's unsafe, okay? And that's part of what should be taught, I think is part of this. Again, it is a village and we all have responsibilities in the village. Now, one of the other things that I think I'm setting to play here is who should be watched for the safety of our law enforcement officers? Who has to be watched? As you said, it's not all mental illness. And you said it just tonight too, it's not all mental illness. A lot of it. And a lot of the things that have happened in the past hasn't been the weapons, the person who has a weapon in their hand. The weapon worked well. The brain did not, okay? So in our village, as I said when I started, we started at one end warriors and leaders and at the other end of the spectrum, there's many people in our town who are challenged, okay? How do you identify them? Well, the people who would identify them the best happens to be our people who run our schools. They know exactly who is challenged and who is not challenged. Because they have to do special things for special people and treat them specially. Now, does it play against A V A? That's up to him to make his mind up, okay? Does it play against, play against HIPAA laws? That's up to him, okay, as your attorney, as your barrister, as a member of the legislature to make those determinations, whether they can say to your law enforcement people, look, this person, this individual, if you come into a situation with them, they're not gonna think like you think they're gonna think. They're gonna think differently. Law enforcement should know in advance because every car now has a computer. Am I right? Okay? So all they need is a database. And how do you establish a database? Well, it just so happens that a township already has a form that you fill out and it's been introduced. And what it does is identifies people in the township who in fact are challenged, who may be a problem in the future. And it's given to the law enforcement officers who have that database. So if they run into a situation, they have that information in advance, which helps them protect themselves and maybe gives it a way to differently handle or diffuse a situation from a person who's not able to be reasonable, okay? So I think I said enough for tonight, but I'm gonna give you the stories.
Well, maybe you can't say anything else. Have a nice night. Have a nice night.
Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Bender, Mr. Bender, Mr. Bender. Where do you live in there?
historic man. Thank you. Good setup. Good evening. I just wanna thank you folks for allowing us to post our signs and remind everybody, June 11th. I'll be there probably nine o'clock in the morning because I've been there the night before lining the, putting the campsites. I need to talk to you about that. Doing the campsites and getting everything set. But I want everybody to know, we really start up at noon if you wanna come earlier because this year because of what's been going on, we haven't pre-allocated campsites. So anybody who's watching or listening that's gonna be out there for your campsite, get there early. There's some people that have put in reservations for particular spots on the, on the field.
You want the lights on?
Yeah, I need to put the lights in. But anyway, just wanna remind everybody out there, it's the 11th. If you wanna get there at 10 o'clock, I'll be there at nine to get, give out campsites. Because normally we have something called Bank Night where we deposit all the money. But we didn't have it this year because of what's gone on. So people are gonna be getting their campsites as they, as they come. So I wanna let people know that too. We wanna see everybody out there and, and, and crossing fingers, crossing eyes, whatever we can cross. Because last year we were two weeks from the event. So let's hope nothing finally goes on between now and June 11th because I got the lime already, so. We gotta, we gotta get it, we gotta get it done. So thank you very much again for the permission to put the signs on. Have a good night.
Anyone else?
Steve, done making most of the posters for it.
Oh, Baker, aye?
Aye.
I have another 20 more registered, 2022, here's 164. What rights are you convening at your executive session?
Also should touch Lacy Kennedy's statement. Although I think we need the executive session to discuss matters of personnel, anticipated pending litigation, matters of real estate and contractual matters. Motion?
Move it second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Yan?
Yes.
Now you'd like a motion to adjourn, please?
Move it second, or Baker.
No further business.
No further business.
You said that, you know.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Take care, John.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.